Thank you. We have established a quorum. We're going to come to order. Guests and visitors have retired behind the rail. And before we start, I would like to all ask everyone to please turn their cell phones off or on airport mode. I know everybody had their phones out taking pictures. If you could just turn them off for the purposes of the council session. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Rabbi Tuvia Goldstein. He is here today as the guest of Councilman O'Neill. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
This is actually not the first time that I've been invited here to give this prayer. The majority of people who asked me to speak somewhere once don't ask me to speak there again. So in that sense, you're in the minority. When I came to your office this morning, I saw it says Councilman Brian O'Neill, Minority Leader. So I understood now why you asked me to come and speak. The truth be told, I came here this morning primarily to try out for a college basketball team. And if you're looking for a rabbi, I'm your man. I apologize, I came a little bit unkempt this morning. The truth is that in the Jewish calendar, there's a time of mourning. The reason that we mourn is not because of the death of a relative, but it's because of many, many years ago, there was a certain disregard for, from community leaders for people. The way people were treating people was not what is expected from community leaders. So we mourn to reflect on the importance of how we treat each other, especially as community leaders. And if we're here in this room this morning, it's because we represent the community and we represent serving others. It's a selfless service. So it's my most fervent wish and prayer that this idea to serve other people without regard for one's own honor, or not to let arrogance or jealousy get in the way, should be the way that we serve every day, that we should be able to do that and for our community and for our people. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you so much, Rabbi. We really appreciate those inspiring words. Council will be at ease. Thank you very much, Rabbi. Again. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 5, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 5, 2016 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved appropriately. Second at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 5, 2016, stand approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is a request for a leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Reynolds Brown.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen, and the leave shall be granted. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has come down to council today to witness the government in action. It's been somewhat of an exciting morning, so I hope you continue to enjoy the day, so much so that you come back again and again. Thank you all very much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who presented a resolution honoring Villanova University men's basketball team. Would Danielle Ochefu and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. In joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilwoman Bass, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Don, Councilman Thaubenberger.
So this morning, President Clark was challenging and talking about he's still got it and he can cross them over. I had to restrain him from himself. So not a call from President Obama, not a ticker tape parade in Center City, not the ringing of the bell at the opening of the New York Stock Exchange, nor throwing the first pitch out at the Phillies baseball game, I was told, was a greater honor than they were going to get today from city council. These are wonderful honors, and it makes our city proud to have our close neighbors in Villanova be a part of the greater Philadelphia region's success. Although my district ends at City Avenue, Councilman Don and I flipped a coin, and he allowed me to do the honors of presenting this day, so I appreciate that. We are extremely proud to say that you are so Philly. Whether it's a cheesesteak, or whether it's bringing revenues from hotel stays, you have made us proud, both on the basketball court and beyond. We look even more to the future and know that this is not the last time to the big dance. So today, we are honoring and congratulating Jay Wright and the Villanova University men's basketball team on winning the 2016 NCAA Men's National Basketball Championship. Applause here. On a last second, heart-stopping, buzzer-beating three-pointer to defeat the North Carolina team, 77 to 74. Whereas Villanova, a private university located in Radnor Township, and nicknamed the Wildcats, is the first member of the Big East Conference and the Philadelphia Big Five, and...
Whereas Villanova University men's basketball has competed since 1920, 1921 season, and whereas Villanova Wildcats have appeared in the NCAA tournament 36 times, by the way, always had them out of the first round, the eighth highest total in NCAA history, and... Whereas this year, the Villanova Wildcats had a highly successful regular season, finishing with a record of 29 wins and five losses, earning them their first ranking in school history, and ultimately landing them the number-two seed in the NCAA March Madness Tournament. And whereas Villanova soared through the tournament by handily defeating the University of North Carolina, Asheville, University of Iowa, University of Miami, University of Kansas, and in the national semifinals, Villanova defeated the University of Oklahoma by 44 points. Big win. The largest margin of victory ever in an NCAA Final Four game, and...
Whereas Villanova's victory over Oklahoma landed them in the NCAA Championship Game for the first time in 31 years, where they faced the number-one seeded UNC. And whereas Villanova defeated UNC on a game-winning three-point shot at the buzzer by Chris Jenkins to win the NCAA Championship with a final score of 77 to 74, clinching their second NCAA Championship in 31 years, and...
Whereas Villanova University, only prior national championship win occurred in 1985 under the head coach Raleigh Massimino and led by star players Ed Pickney and Howard Presley, in which they defeated heavily-favored Georgetown University led by Patrick Ewing in what is considered one of the greatest upsets in NCAA basketball history. And whereas Coach Jay Wright was named the 2016 Nasmith Coach of the Year, and Senior Ryan Archie DiACeno was named Final Four Most Outstanding Player, now therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, hereby honors and congratulates Jay Wright and the Villanova University men's basketball team on winning the 2016 NCAA Men's National Basketball Championship on a last-minute buzzer beater, we can say that a million times, and a three-pointer to defeat University of North Carolina, 77 to 74. Note, I have won the right tie with the right colors. Signed by all members of council. Congratulations.
Thank you. Chair recognizes... The big guy.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming out here. On behalf of my teammates and my coaches, we just want to thank you for recognizing us here today. We'd like to thank Council President Darryl Clark, Councilman Curtis Jones, and all the members of the Philadelphia Council for hosting us here today. Your support is amazing, and we really appreciate it a lot. We're extremely humbled by it, and just to see the great city of Philadelphia support Villanova the way they did this year, throughout the years, and especially on our run to the championship, means a lot to us. And we're just extremely proud to represent Philadelphia. I want to thank you again for this great honor, and thank you one more time for the parade. I was unfortunately at no other Philadelphia parade, but I have to say that was probably the best one I've been at, so hopefully, hopefully next year we'll have a better one. Thank you.
Chair now recognizes Coach Wright.
We're most proud of our players, and I think Daniel said it very well, how much we take pride in representing the City of Philadelphia, and really how honored and humbled we were that the City of Philadelphia embraced us and provided the parade that you all did, to put that together that quickly and for it to run so efficiently. To see all the mayor and all the members of city council there, the Philadelphia police were amazing. We were very impressed and very honored. And I know how important education is to the City of Philadelphia. I follow all the work you all do. What we're most proud of is every player that has played for us, that's been there for four years, has graduated on time. We have 100% graduation rate. We have five seniors on this team, and we are very proud of the national championship. We're most proud. All five of them will graduate tomorrow on time, and they'll be national champions and college graduates. I know that's important to all of you in the City of Philadelphia. We've got some great young people here today that are great students in the City of Philadelphia, and we congratulate them and wish them the best on their tournament. And we want to thank all of you for what you do for the City of Philadelphia, and most importantly, for including us and embracing us. Thank you very much, and keep up the great work.
Council will be at ease. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution on my behalf honoring the Julia R. Masterman School and students. Would the team members and those accompanying them, please join the Councilwoman at the podium? In joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilman Greenly and Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this honor. Resolution honoring, congratulating, and recognizing the Julia R. Masterman School and its students for winning first place in every element of the state odyssey of the Mind Competition. Whereas Odyssey of the Mind is an international creativity competition that synthesizes science, technology, engineering, and the arts. And whereas Odyssey of the Mind has been encouraging students around the world to, quote, "think outside the box and work together as a team to solve challenging problems" since 1978, and...
Whereas Julia Powers in the fifth grade, Samuel Jagu of the sixth grade, and Drew Brown, Jordan Carrier... Whereas, let me correct that. Whereas Julia Powers in fifth grade, and Samuel Jagu in the fifth grade, and sixth graders Drew Brown, Jordan Carrier, Willem Cousineau, Reagan Riley, and Ariel Weinbaum constitute the Julia R. Masterman School's Odyssey of the Mind Team, which is coached by Chris Powers, a teacher at Samuel Powell Elementary School, and Brett Mandell, and... Whereas the Julia R. Masterman School's Odyssey of the Mind Team placed second in the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Tournament on February 27, 2016, and...
Whereas the Julia R. Masterman School's Odyssey of the Mind Team went on to place first in all three scoring categories at the Pennsylvania State Finals on April 2, 2016, being one of only two teams to accomplish this feat. And whereas the Julia R. Masterman School's Odyssey of the Mind Team solved the something fishy problem by designing and operating a technical solution to catch three different moving objects outside of a designated area and during a change in weather. That hurts my head just thinking about it.
Whereas the Julia R. Masterman School, a Philadelphia public school, will for the third straight year compete in the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals. More than 800 teams from across the United States and around the world that represent the best of young creative minds will compete in Iowa on May 25, 2016 through May 28, 2016. Now therefore, resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honors, congratulates, and recognizes the Julia R. Masterman School's Odyssey of the Mind Team on winning first place in all three categories in the state competition, and wish them all the success in the World Finals competition in Iowa, and...
Be it further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the Julia R. Masterman School's Odyssey of the Mind Team as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Congratulations, Roxars.
And at this time, the Chair recognizes team members for remarks.
Good morning. I'm Jessica Brown, Principal of Masterman, and I could not be more proud of these students who worked tirelessly before, after school, on the weekends, when school wasn't in session. I am just so proud of them. I also want to thank the parents, and the parents, many of the parents were coaches, for their tremendous support and the students fundraising. I really, I look forward to the day when there's a steady stream of funding for these clubs to exist in all public schools, so thank you.
As stated, Odyssey of the Mind is a creativity competition for kids ages third grade to college.
In Odyssey of the Mind, we build, brainstorm, and perform skits that represent outside-of-the-box creativity.
This year, our team had to use, this year, our team had to use an object to catch something that was on the move.
Our skit was about a girl trying to catch her grandfather on social media.
We won Odyssey of the Mind regional and state competitions, and now we're headed to World Finals.
As stated before, Odyssey of the Mind World Finals are in Iowa, and we're going to need all of your help to get there. If you would donate, we have a GoFundMe, and you can also donate by cash or a check.
Odyssey of the Mind has given me many memories that I'll cherish for the rest of my life and will continue to give me them, and your donations can really help us get us there.
Council will be at ease. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass, who presented a resolution recognizing Opera Philadelphia. Would David B. Devine and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the In joining Councilwoman Bass, we have Councilman David O., Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilman Alan Don, and Councilman Mark Swill.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Well, it's such a pleasure and an honor to be here today and to recognize Opera Philadelphia. And tomorrow, they'll be leaving Philadelphia and heading to London where they will be in competition for the 2016 International Opera Awards, which is really the opera's Oscars. And it's for the very best in the world. They are one of five teams selected throughout the world, not just the country, throughout the world. And we're so honored to recognize them and to spread the word about the fantastic work that they do. I think that we all sing opera, but we probably sing it at home, in the shower, where nobody's looking, nobody can hear us. But we have to... Mark, you sound... Mark's going to sing for us. No. But we all sing opera in private. But for those who have the courage, and actually the real talent honed over many, many years to be able to do this in public, it is truly an amazing thing. We want to recognize Opera Philadelphia. The performers have collectively spent decades in training and preparing to be the very best. And on a day when we recognize Villanova for their championship, their national championship, and we recognize Masterman with their local wins and statewide wins, and on their way to the World Finals, and now we're sending Opera Philadelphia off to the World Finals of opera, and so we're very, very excited, because Philly loves a winner, don't we?
Yes.
All right. So the resolution reads, "Recognizing and honoring Opera Philadelphia on their prestigious nomination as the best opera company in the 2016 International Opera Awards. Whereas Opera Philadelphia is the only American company to be nominated in the Best Opera Company category by the International Opera Awards, an event championing the finest operatic talent around the world, and considered the Oscars of the opera world. And whereas International Opera Awards will announce the winners in 20 categories at a ceremony in London on May 15, and..."
And whereas, in collaboration with the School District of Philadelphia, Opera Philadelphia's Sound of Learning Program addresses the growing gap in arts education and access in the greater Philadelphia region. The program has reached nearly 150,000 students in 10 counties through an intensive in-school literacy-based music education program that includes opportunities to see live opera performances, and...
Whereas Opera Philadelphia continues to set new expectations for opera, for how the arts can be an economic driver, elevate the city's global profile, invigorate the community through creative placemaking and educational initiatives, and attract artistry, attendance, and philanthropy from outside of Philadelphia, and...
Whereas in September 2017, Philadelphia Opera will launch an annual 12-day multi-stage opera festival that will offer more than 30 total performances across seven different venues in Philadelphia. The opera estimates that more than 25,000 tickets will be issued, and that over 20% of festival single-ticket buyers will be from outside of the greater Philadelphia region. These cultural tourists will bring an economic injection into the city... These cultural tourists will bring an economic injection into the city during the festival footprint through lodging, hospitality, transportation, and other cultural attractions. Additionally, the festival will provide employment opportunities to artistic production and support personnel with an estimated 500 full-time and seasonal jobs. And.
Whereas the festival will include the world premiere of "We Shall Not Be Moved", a fusion hip-hop and opera inspired by writings of Philadelphia high school students. This production originated from hip-hop opera Philadelphia's collaboration with Art Sanctuary to engage Philadelphia high school students in the creation, production, and performance of a full hip-hop opera inspired by their stories. Now therefore, be it.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby recognizes and honors Opera Philadelphia on their prestigious nomination as the best opera company at the 2016 International Opera Awards. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Opera Philadelphia as evidence of the sincere appreciation, respect, and admiration of this legislative body. Congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Devon for remarks.
Thank you very much. On behalf of our board, staff, and our artists, I'd like to extend sincere thanks. This opera company loves Philadelphia. We love how Philadelphia is at the intersection of sophistication and grit, exemplified by our other people being honored here today. And we look forward to taking that energy and that work and representing our city internationally and being ambassadors for the many great things that happen in Philadelphia. And we will wear this city with pride on our way over to London and thank City Council and Councilwoman Bass for recognizing our efforts now and in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Bies. Thank you very much. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on May 10, 2016, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on April 28, 2016, and that I signed the following bills which were passed by council at its session on May 5, 2016, Bill Numbers 160096, 160098, 160221, and 160222. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Cecil B. Moore Avenue urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1800 Cecil B. Moore Avenue and 1804 Cecil B. Moore Avenue. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 3741 Aspen Street. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 3405 Wallace Street. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Second Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Sixth Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deed conveying title to certain properties located in the Seventh Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce acting on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to lease and purchase from Tennyham Township an approximately 21-acre parcel of land adjacent to Philadelphia International Airport. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce acting on behalf of the city to acquire approximately 8.5 acres of Hog Island Road from Tennyham Township, together with all improvements thereon. And an ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner to enter into an agreement to release and indemnify the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority in connection with access provided by Scepter to carry out a project for improvements to JFK Plaza, also known as Love Park, at 15th and JFK Boulevard. And an ordinance amending the ordinance approved July 12, 1968, as last amended June 12, 2014, relating to pension benefits for employees working on behalf of Philadelphia Gas Works by revising the Philadelphia Gas Works Pension Plan to incorporate amendments thereto with respect to death benefits for certain plan participants. And an ordinance authorizing the Public Property Commissioner to accept title to all or a portion of parcels of land in an area bounded by North Street, North 18th Street, Wallace Street, and North 19th Street, and amending Chapter 15200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fairmount Park System to include such properties among the areas designated as part of the Fairmount Park System, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I have three resolutions. One is non-privileged.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing and congratulating ye olde Philadelphia Club of Philadelphia on the occasion of its 90th anniversary.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 3741 Aspen Street.
And next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 3405 Wallace Street.
Also on next week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer four bills and three resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development a parcel of land commonly known as 3033 West Glenwood Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to accept title to all or a portion of the parcels of land in the area bounded by North Street, North 18th Street, Wallace Street, and North 19th Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing Moharren Partners to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1355 Front Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zone and designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Diamond Street, Franklin Street, Burke Street, and Ninth Street.
Also refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees and potential to sit on lots of pieces of ground with buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 32nd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Fairhill East Hoga Hunting Park urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 3110 North Percy Street.
Also on next week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Counselman.
And an ordinance authorizing the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority to construct, own, and maintain digital outdoor advertising signs encroaching on the public right-of-way at various subway, elevated train, and rail entrances in the city.
That will be referred to the appropriate committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
One bill, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, Subcode F, the Philadelphia Fire Code, and Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, by adding certain provisions relating to maintenance and inspection of fire escapes.
That bill will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have two bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
You're welcome.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce acting on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to lease and purchase from Tennyham Township an approximately 21-acre parcel of land adjacent to Philadelphia International Airport.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce acting on behalf of the city to acquire approximately 8.5 acres of Hog Island Road from Tennyham Township, together with all improvements thereon.
And refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Second Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
Next week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Konyez Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have five bills, one on behalf of the administration, and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And an ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zone and designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by North Front Street, West Burke Street, North Third Street, and West Oxford Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zone and designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by North Third Street, West Burke Street, North Sixth Street, West Masters Street, American Street, and Oxford Street. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 within the grants revenue fund from the Director of Finance provision for other grants to the Managing Director. And an ordinance amending Title IV, the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of the Philadelphia Code by revising requirements relating to construction and demolition projects, including the expiration of permits. And an ordinance amending Title IV, the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of the Philadelphia Code by revising signage requirements relating to construction and demolition projects.
Those five bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees and potential to sit on lots of pieces of ground with buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 19th and 23rd wards of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Seventh Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
Also on next week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I have one bill on behalf of the administration and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
And an ordinance amending, the ordinance approved July 12, 1968, as last amended June 12, 2014, relating to the pension benefits for employees working on behalf of Philadelphia Gas Works by revising the Philadelphia Gas Works Pension Plan to incorporate amendments thereto with respect to death benefits for certain plan participants.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the School Reform Commission Superintendent William Height and the School District of Philadelphia to actively negotiate a mutually agreeable new contract with the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers that provides adequate staffing at our schools, acknowledges the contributions and sacrifices of teachers and other staff, and respects both seniority and traditional payment structures like step pay.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill on your behalf of which I am a co-sponsor. I also have one non-privileged resolution, and I wish to be recognized after the title of the resolution is read for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 191400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax by revising the rate of the tax.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to oppose legislation that would weaken existing protections against predatory lending and harm the citizens of our Commonwealth by legalizing high-cost, long-term payday loans.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I will wait until the adoption of the resolution, co-sponsored by yourself, Councilman Brian O'Neil, Blackwell, Kenone Sanchez, and Green, at the end of the calendar to make a few comments on that, I want to move at this time to suspend the rules of council so as to admit a consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman, you want to suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules of council so as to admit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Okay, thank you. Is it second?
Yes.
Is moving property second that the rules of council be suspended to allow this resolution to be on today's final passes calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, ayes. And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Counselman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Good morning, Council President. I have one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
And I'd like to be heard on the bill at the time of introduction.
Okay, after the, you want to, after you read the title?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Counselman.
And an ordinance amending Subcode PM of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, by adding certain provisions relating to drinking facilities in schools.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you, Council President. Over the course of a number of different hearings, we've, we've been hearing from young people talk significantly about what it means to lack water access in schools. Recently, the school district, in response to a request from City Council on student demands for a fountain inventory, released data this week that showed that 15% of its water fountains are non-operational, and in many cases, found that water fountains are not equitably distributed across the district, including some pretty shocking shortages of operational water fountains, including schools such as Franklin Learning Center, Dobson Elementary, and more elementary schools, which just have one functioning water fountain in each school, serving over 2,400 students. Many of these students have complained repeatedly about lacking water access, that they frequently feel dehydrated, that they have to pay $1.50 for water from vending machines, and that this has become a very serious issue for many of them. They feel that it speaks very directly to this issue of human rights. This bill, which is co-sponsored by council members Blackwell, Heenan, Kinyones, Bass, Kinyones Sanchez, Bass, and Councilman Dom, will help address and mandate and keep the school district of Philadelphia, including older buildings, to the standard plumbing code of the city that mandates one working operational water fountain per 100 students and one working water fountain per floor. It's our belief that access to drinking water for all children is a human right, and this will ensure that the district honors and fulfills that moral responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselman. That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling upon the School Reform Commission Superintendent William Height and the School District of Philadelphia to address widespread overcrowding in Philadelphia schools by enacting a lower class size in grades kindergarten through third grade and ending the practice of split-grade classrooms unless specifically designed third grade and ending the practice of split-grade classrooms unless specifically designed for pedagogical purposes.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobin.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill on your behalf and six nonprivileged resolutions.
An ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commission to enter into an agreement to release and indemnify the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority in connection with access provided by SEPTA to carry out projects, a project for improvements to JFK Plaza, also known as Love Park, at 15th and JFK Boulevard.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution approving Supreme Dow to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District, and a resolution appointing Patrick W. Jones to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District, and a nonprivileged resolution appointing Daniel Connor to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District, and a nonprivileged resolution appointing Byron Davis to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District, and a nonprivileged resolution appointing Julia Baron Nuskis to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District, and a nonprivileged resolution appointing Chapetta Marison to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District.
Thank you. Those resolutions just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'm sorry, they're co-sponsored by council members Quinones Sanchez, Parker, Green, Greenlee, Dom, and Bass.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing and thanking NBC10 for its production of Generation Addicted using excellent reporting and an online platform to educate the public school about heroin and opioid addiction.
That will be on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating the 2016 Philippine Independence Week celebration from June 4 to June 12.
And that will also be on today's final passes calendar. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. There are no reports from committee today, so we will move to the consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions or bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers 160256, 160412, 160420, 160421, 160423, 160430, 160228-A, and 160271-A. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution on the final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask that you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will come to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. And when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines established for public comment and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify on that bill or resolution. Mr. Decker, please call the first name.
Council President, I'd like to add to the bills and reading that Bill Number 160110 was late with an amendment being added to the calendar in the document that I have here today. So 160110 will be amended today.
Thanks, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please call the name of the first witness.
Joe Dennehall commenting on 160256, 160418, 160421, 160430, 160420, and 160423.
Okay, good morning. When the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station which the laws of nature and laws of God entitle them to, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes that impel them to the separation. The history of the present King of Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having direct objective with the establishment of an absolute tyranny over this state. To prove this, the facts be submitted to a candid world. He has erected a multitude of new offices, sent the hither swarms of officers to harass our people, for quartering large bodies of armed troops among us, for protecting them by mock trials from punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of this state, Black Lives Matter, for imposing taxes on us without consent. There are several indications of that, for depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury, Trial Number 14-6880. In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress. In the most humble terms, our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is marked by every act that may define a tyrant is unfit to be a ruler of these free people. These are excerpts of the Declaration of Independence, true words have never been spoken in the square of liberty. Council should take heart these words and act accordingly. If council's behavior sounds familiar to this document, then act morally. Many have testified recently that perceived injustice by agents and agencies of this government, you as a government, by the consent of the government, have the fiduciary duty to act on our behalf. Paul Rosen has quoted, "Answer to injustice is not to silence the critic, but end the injustice." Defund RDA and PHA now. Investigate why no charges have been filed by the DA and the Attorney General. This is an official petition of the people. And I leave you with a question. Has government for the people perished in Philadelphia of
I am a long-timed resident of North Third Street in Northern Liberties, where I've lived through the decline of the neighborhood in the '70s, '80s, and '90s, and the current rebirth and development wave. Given my long experience in Northern Liberties, in both good times and bad, I can say that I am very concerned about the rezoning of this property in question in this bill. It's a property that encompasses only one building, which is former Finnegan's Wake, which is a bar in the neighborhood. It's the Third and Green Streets. The immediate neighbors to this project, those who live on Green Street, Bodine Street, and North Third Street, are all concerned about the impact of the added height on the small streets at the rear of this property. The neighbors certainly support the redevelopment of the site, and we feel that the proposed office use is a good one, but we believe that this should be facilitated via zoning variance rather than rezoning the property. With such a variance, we, the immediate neighbors, most directly affected by the project, would be able to negotiate with the developer over massing of added height. This is critically important because several of nearby residents, many of nearby residents, are working artists, those who moved into Northern Liberties long ago and settled in the neighborhood. Light is important to us and has a great impact on our work. While additional height for a building at the Finnegan's location will affect our working life, as well as the surrounding environment as a whole, through judicious design, this impact can be minimized as much as possible. For instance, we would hope to have the massing of stair towers and pilothouses arranged in such a way so as to have the least impact on the neighbors' existing properties and on the artist's studios on Green Street behind the property. A variance would give us the ability to discuss these matters seriously with the developers of the project or the developers of any future project that might be proposed for this site. Inability to negotiate could have serious consequences for the production of art and the quality of life in the neighborhood, which is already subject to serious overdevelopment. I urge you to vote against the rezoning of this property so that the neighbors' concerns about their work and livelihood can be taken into account with the development project at this site. Thank you.
Addressing council's group, Carrie Smith, John Dodds, Alicia Blessington, Sunnyet Mohammed, Joanne Sapt, Reverend Gregory Halston, and Mark Correll commenting on Councilwoman Parker's payday resolution introduced today on today's final passage calendar.
Good morning. I'm Carrie Smith, and I'm an attorney with Community Legal Services. CLS, on behalf of its low-income clients, is here today in support of the resolution urging the General Assembly to oppose legislation that would legalize high-cost, long-term payday loans. Payday loans are an abusive predatory form of lending. They carry very high interest rates, 200 to 300% annually, combined with really extraordinary leverage, as the lender has access to the borrower's bank account to get paid first on payday. In states where they're legal, they cause great harm to borrowers. And we're fortunate that here in Pennsylvania we have one of the strongest laws in the country to guard against predatory lending, but it's under attack as the out-of-state payday lenders are working to gut our protections. We thank Councilwoman Parker for her leadership on this issue. When there was a big fight in 2012 to bring these kind of payday loans into Pennsylvania, she helped lead the effort to oppose it, standing with a diverse coalition of over 100 groups from across the state. Some of our coalition members are here today. And Leo Vassal is taking three minutes in support. We'll all just speak one minute briefly about why this resolution is so important.
Yeah, I'm John Dodds, Director of the Philadelphia Unemployment Project. I'm sure, as we all know, Philadelphia has the highest poverty rate of any of the 10 largest cities. There's many ways to fight poverty in this city, but opening the doors to a predatory loan product that loans money to people at 200 and 300% interest is surely not one. This is an industry that tries to make money off of desperate people. We need to keep them at bay, and we need to continue the ban on payday lending in the state of Pennsylvania so they don't come into our city and make money from people that cannot afford it. That's thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Correll. I'm the community organizer for Southwest Community Development Corporation. Our boundaries cover the area between university city and the airport, where more than 73,000 Philadelphians reside. The work of Southwest CDC is extensive, and we take our work seriously. We provide many types of services. We are a Neighborhood Advocacy Committee, NAC, a Neighborhood Energy Center. We provide housing counseling, utility assistance to neighborhoods, business support, and after-school programs, and publish the Southwest Globe Times newspaper. These are just the few of the many types of programs we implement. And it's because our residents carry some of the heaviest economic and social burdens in Philadelphia, nearly 30% of Southwest Philadelphia citizens live below the poverty line. Southwest has a higher four-year violent crime rate than the city as a whole. Gutting our state's strong cap on interest and fees to legalize high-cost, long-term installment loans would drop predatory storefronts right into our neighborhoods, seeking to hoodwink the very neighbors we serve. These businesses would not only lock our residents into a debt trap, they would also drain the money from our community and force Southwest CDC to divert resources away from neighborhood progress in order to assist our clients in climbing out of the trap of debt. This will result in disastrous consequences for our community, our programs, and the clients we serve. The payday lending industry is the last thing we need to see in our neighborhoods.
Good morning. I should say good afternoon. I'm Alicia Blessington, retired military officer representing the MOA Military Officers Association of America Philadelphia chapter. Military veterans understand all too harshly the harm of payday loans. The Department of Defense did an intensive study on it and concluded that the results of these loans was impeding military readiness. A federal law was passed, the Military Lending Act, which limits the percent of interest and fees to 36%. These fees and interest can -- this law only covers active-duty military personnel and their families. Unfortunately, retired veterans, many living on fixed income, returning members of the National Guard and the Reserve, are not covered by the military lending law. However, they are covered by the current legislation in Pennsylvania for small loans. And this -- the Pennsylvania coverage currently in place has been recognized by the Department of Defense as one of the strongest in the country. That's why military organizations have been working so hard over the last couple of years, particularly in Pennsylvania, to prevent payday loans being effective in Pennsylvania. Thank you for considering the welfare of the brave men and women who continue to serve in our military, and by adopting this resolution, you will be of more benefit to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Free Testimony.
My name is Sunnyet Mohammed. I'm the Director of Education at Clarify. In the United States Senate hearings this month, Senator Elizabeth Warren compared payday loans to throwing a brick to a drowning man. Contrary to the payday lending lobby, payday loans are not a lifeline for cash-strapped consumers. They help perpetuate a two-tiered financial system of insiders and outsiders, haves and have-nots, those who have access to financial products at favorable and sustainable terms versus those who pay a greater proportion of their limited income to participate in the financial marketplace. Let's be clear about the real issue. Being low-income or poor is a result of a shortage of money, not a lack of access to short-term credit. Instead of increasing the costs of being poor in this country, let's devote our time and resources to helping families avoid the circumstances that create a market for payday loans in the first place. Support livable wages and financial counseling. Keep Pennsylvania payday free. Thank you.
Thank you, Free Testimony.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Sapt, and I am pleased to represent the Unitarian Universalist PA Legislative Advocacy Network, UU PLAN. As a Unitarian Universalist and as people of faith, we would like to commend the Philadelphia City Council for taking a proactive stand on predatory lending. Our organization, UU PLAN, has been actively working for years to prevent predatory lending from setting up shop in Pennsylvania. Although the product names keep changing, each proposal is actually a debt trap, which takes advantage of people who find themselves in vulnerable financial situations. With interest rates as high as 300% APR, we find these lending practices to be morally reprehensible. Kudos to the Philadelphia City Council for adapting a resolution to prevent any attempts to weaken Pennsylvania's existing strong laws around payday lending, and encouraging our PA legislators to resist any efforts to change course. Thank you.
Thank you, Free Testimony.
I'm going to try to be quick. My name's Mike Rolls. I am the field organizer for the Pennsylvania Public Interest Research Group. We like to say PennPerg to make it easy. We're a membership-based organization. We focus on consumer rights and protections, protecting democracy, and safeguarding our public health. We join with all the previous speakers for all of those reasons as to why we stand behind this and why we need to keep the new kind of credit product, this new long-term installment loan, which is a repackaged version of a regular payday loan, to keep this out of Pennsylvania. We want to thank Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Green as well, for standing behind us, and we want to thank the whole body here for supporting us to keep payday loans out of Pennsylvania, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Free Testimony.
Gladys Hughes.
Commenting on 160256.
My name is Gladys Hughes. I've been a homeowner for 35 years. I'm retired now. And I just want to say, we work, or have worked. We vote. We have been in our homes, some of us, many years. And for a few taxes, our homes can be placed in foreclosure and sheriff sale by lawyers using loopholes. We have many helpers that we put into office that don't help, and others that are just hired to help people and don't. We, the landowners, fall behind sometimes. Some of our helpers are senators, congressmen, councilmen, mayors, save-your-home representatives that don't help. They help the banks. We have judges like Ellen Kaiser, OD. We have lawyers like Stephen Corbin, and firms, law firms, like Folliaman and Holloman. There are reasons our hired people let things go by. We're doing nothing. Reasons some: redevelopments for lands, stadiums must be built, billboards, malls that must be built, new people coming in town, homes they need. Too busy with important business. Again, redevelopment for lands. They are -- sorry. We don't seem to count old age anymore. And things are done to people when they don't want to move. They are made to pay for things they shouldn't have to. As one lady stated a while ago, taking people's homes, putting people in the street is murder. I say it. I say, it's criminal, done by criminals that use the law with loopholes, and they get away with it. It's allowed.
Thank you, Free Testimony. Brad Wilson commenting on 160412.
All right, I'm Brad, everybody. Just start, I lied about the topic. I didn't come down to talk about that. Came down to talk about the sugar tax. You all want to close on soda. Everybody, two days go up on, it's rising sun. I see two trucks going down the road, and they're all protesting the signs about it. But I got a great idea, if you all will prove it. There's an idea that's a win-win for everybody. You look around the city, there's way too much empty real estate. There are nothing but dwellings where criminal behavior happen on. Guys storing their stash, rape women, whatever you want to do. It's criminal behavior. We need to get rid of criminal behavior and help Richard Ross, since he's a cool dude, help him stop it and get all this real estate back into working positions. Everyone, when you ride the L towards 69th Street from here, you come above ground. There's a nice big cement building that says insurance on. What about taking some money and get that building back into being productive again? It will bring property tax in, or any kind of money in for the city. What about all the homes going up towards Frankford from here? All these homes get rehabbed, and get all the others rehabbed, where we put people in them and living. It'll bring more property taxes in for all of you. You're all crying for money, but let's do the real estate thing. We all know real estate's a smart way to go. Come on, Daryl, you're not stupid. How about the real estate? Can you agree with me? Can I get a smile on it? Come on, Daryl, you can smile better than that. Come on. How about, everybody, let's do this. How many of you would like to see real estate? Raise your hand. How many would like to see real estate, everybody? This is the way to roll. We get real estate moving, put people in it, put businesses in it. It will bring money for the city. My opinion, the city should be self-supported, and the real estate is the way to do it. It will also improve property taxes, and it'll also improve the, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Value of the properties. It'll bring all the value properties up. It's a win-win situation. See now, Daryl Spring with me, good man. It's not your fight, you're too far away, Daryl. But come on, let's do the properties, everybody. It's a way to clean the city up. It's a positive resolution. It's a win-win situation for everybody. You don't want to lose this? Are the criminals. Nothing? Does anybody have any questions for me? No? All right, well, I'm done. I hope you guys all agree. Let's make the properties work for us. That will get money. This is something better. And on the soda tax, another way to do it, get rid of three cents. Let's do a nickel on everything from water to alcohol. That will make it win. All right?
Thank you very much, Free Testimony.
Let's make our real estate work.
Sheila Lloyd commenting on 160256.
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon.
Resolution 160256 continues to set. Yet another week while land developers' resolutions are passing through our city council chambers at a rate, can you hear me now, at a rate that will make the founding fathers of this General Assembly cry out from the grave. I guess by all the secretive land deals that are currently unrevealing in the media and under federal investigation, this city and the voters will now get to see just how concerned our council members have been with passive resolutions that are connected to real issues, those issues that truly affect the people and their constitutional liberties. Our city has a large young population based at, now sleeps on the street. We also have an increasing rate of illegal foreclosures and a homeless rate that shocks us so much that we pushed them off the street when Pope Francis came to visit. Our voters need to know that come reelection time, just how much time and effort our council has spent on becoming real estate brokers and land developers opposed to doing the right thing, which is to serve the people, especially those who have elected you. Council, please remember one thing. I mean, remember one thing, that Almighty God is watching and recording everything you say and do under that right hand you've sworn as publicly displaying your commitment to protect and serve as a public servant. But we strongly urge you to become private servants to the banks and land developers in an effort to line your pockets, because that would truly be criminal. And that's something we feel that the voters should be made aware of. As you all know, your government immunity only protects you. If your acts and transactions are legitimate, only your souls can answer that. Councilman Jones, Councilman Blackwell, Councilwoman Bass, Keonis, Parker, and Jim, you all started this project to correct the now-thought foreclosure system. Now let's work together to correct and make changes for the people and not the banks and Wall Street. With integrity and honor, the families of Philadelphia, thank you for serving.
Thank you, Free Testimony. Johnny Young commenting on 160256.
Good afternoon. Good morning, Council, and members and people. Under Resolution 160256, our judicial branch, along with our mortgage foreclosure program, which is nothing more than a special program, which in all cases is unconstitutional, has been ripe for the gavel for over several years now. And here are some reasons, or key reasons, I think, we should pass 160256. Number one, when a special program or system is fundamentally injuring and harming the people, it needs a hard stop so that it can be evaluated and possibly overhauled. Two, when the injuries, misconduct, and errors arising from this special program are starting to appear systemic in its nature. Three, when the acts of that special program is in direct violation of fundamentally constitutional rights, liberties, and/or freedoms. Four, when that special program violates local, state, and federal statutes, codes, and laws, and also circumvents local procedures. Five, when public funds are aiding and abetting that special program without oversight, checks, and balances in order to eliminate misconduct and error, there's a real problem. Six, when a special program is used to steal, confiscate, misrepresent, or violate the public trust accounts, assets, such as homes, cars, false imprisonment, there is a problem. Pope Francis shared a message that illustrates what this judicial branch has violated for decades, and we, the families of Philadelphia, will bring a hard stop to this violation starting today by demanding that the passing of this resolution is enacted. The Vatican created a World Trust using the birth certificates to capture the value of each individual's future productive energy. Each state, province, and country in the fiat monetary system contributes to the people's value in this World Trust, identified by the social security number, the SIN, or the EIN number. Now we have judges that administrate the birth certificate trust account in court matters, favoring the court and the banks, acting as the presumed beneficiary, since they have not properly advised the true beneficiary of their own trust. On September, on Septem -- excuse me, in two major court cases, Saunders versus State and Wheeler versus State, the most important duty of the judiciary is to make the titles to real estate as certain as possible, so that every prudent and intelligent man and woman may know what their rights are, and that they may hold their titles and abide in their properties in security and peace. Our city solicitors shall not label private property as commercial property. Council, we strongly urge you to not become private servants to the banks and land developers, and do not make your oath a lie. With integrity and honor, the families of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Haruk Robinson commenting on 160256.
Greetings.
Good afternoon.
Councilman Don, since you are now Majority Leader of the Housing and Safety Committee, please remember, as you push forward, new strategies that may enhance the land structure, that you remain vigilant to stand by your oath of office and refrain from being caught up in the banks, Wall Street, and developers that you have networked with in your past and present career. You are elected to serve the people and protect all liberties, property, and freedoms that are uneligible. In honor and integrity, the families of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Teresa McCormick.
Good morning, City Council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon already?
Yeah.
City Council, my name is Teresa McCormick, and I'm from the Pointe Breeze area. And I felt impelled to bring my community group as well. The reason why we are here is we're asking you to hold this bill. The reason why, which is 160420, is that, which we have always come down here to ask you to do, is to give affordable housing in our area. Councilman Clark, you said to us that you was going to give us 300 houses. We haven't seen them yet. We are here now, again, with this bill for 300 affordable houses. We have heard from certain councilmen for a new 20-year tax abatement, but we still have not gotten our 300 houses. We have been time and time again, down to the ZBA, we have not been respected. We have two, three major projects, councilmen, which are at 20th and Wharton. We have had, which is very, which is, which is not heard of within the black community, we have had 755 people to come out for that project. The community has said no. Councilman Clark and City Council, you said that you was going to bring in 10,000 jobs. That area there could be the catalyst of your 10,000 jobs. It is right now zoned as industrial. We ask that it stay industrial. We're asking that the ZBA respect the community. We are asking that the ZBA, or you, Councilman Clark, please intervene. The reason why I have this here today is because this is the only time when we get out on the corners that City Council or anyone from council will hear what we got to say. Our voice counts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Free Testimony. Maria Ortiz commenting on 160420.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Ortiz. I'm a South Philadelphia resident. I'm a grandparent.
Pull your mic down. Keith. Keith, pull the mic down so she can hear.
My name is Maria Ortiz. I'm a grandparent, a senior, a heir in South Philadelphia area. What I'm asking today is for you to hold these properties so the resident can get some answers to what is really going on in our area, and also with the city-owned properties. We have not had any affordable housing for low-income family, only high-end, plus in two-story row homes. They put there. I'm one of them. I live one next to the property. They put this humongous house, broke my ceiling. I had a rubber roof and tearing down my front. But there's no, of course, responsibility to these developers. They say they're going to fix them. They promised us nothing. I'm one of them, and I live next to one of them. What we are asking for today is fair treatment from the ZBA and respect our votes when we attend these hearings. Developer comes in with large amount of money and allegedly pay off people to support them, or have people come from outside in the community using addresses that not people's living in to participate in these hearings. The zoning meeting on the behalf is unethical, it's not fair, and it's humiliating to the people in the community. We need job readiness, business, store, recreation center for our community. If this had been a white area, they got it. There are building our area not to conformity, but disruption. Pointe Breeze community area is not a community anymore. It's a war zone. Long, it has been a long, hard fight. By me being a heir, a senior, raise my children, put them into the best college, I have no money now. I worked hard to stay in this community. They go to the executor, get them to sign off, the heir gets nothing. That's not fair. You say you're for the community, for the resident in the Philadelphia area? I think not. You take a sworn duty to protect us. Where is the protection in the state of Philadelphia? Daryl Clark, I'm very surprised at you. You stand up there and you say you love us? Where's the love? Show it now.
Thank you, Free Testimony. Joanne Campbell commenting on 160420.
Good morning, Council. I'm a resident.
Good afternoon.
I'm a resident of Pointe Breeze, and I attend community and zoning meetings, but I never see City Council on property projects. I never see City Council-owned property projects presented at our community meetings. Our community needs affordable housing, not just market-rate housing. I support some projects, but some I don't. I notice when we vote against those projects, our votes are not being represented at the Planning Commission and ZBA. It seems our vote doesn't count. I ask City Council to address the unfair treatment at the ZBA. We ask for your respect, and our vote, no means no. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Tiffany Green commenting on 160420.
Hi, good morning.
Good afternoon.
I just want to follow up on what some of my residents or common colleagues have said. Back in February, over 80 properties were given in, were supposedly submitted into the land bank, and we've tried to track it, and we have had a very hard time tracking these properties to see what is the plan for these properties. Now, as Teresa stated, we were promised 300 houses. Now, when we went to our councilperson, our councilperson told us to go talk with you, Council President Clark, and when we talked, we wrote you several times, we have yet to hear from you, and we continue to get the double talk. We're saying at this time that these, we think at this time that these properties need to be addressed, and we need to have this affordable housing. The other issue that we feel at this point is that there's no real town hall meeting to come down and discuss with us what we want. At this point, we should be able to address the height limit. Everyone else is getting bills, and we have yet to get our housing conformity bill. We should be able to address that height and that deck. Why should we not be just taking away our rights to have a say on what comes in our community? And so, we're asking you to have hearings or gentrification. Mayor Kenny said when he was councilman that he would have hearings on gentrification, but now that he is the mayor, he has the power to have hearings on gentrification, and we're calling for those hearings because as you can hear, see, there are a lot of issues regarding properties, developers, real estate, and taxes. We need to have hearings, and we're requesting these hearings now. The ZBA is not respecting us. We go down there, and they're voting in favor of these developers against the black community. They're not respecting us. The Planning Commission is voting against us. They are pro-market rate, and city officials are pushing gentrification when you don't respect our vote. We're saying right now that enough is enough. We've had enough. We feel that what's in the media has shown that there are a lot of promises about low-market rate housing, but you say it, but we don't see it, okay? And then you wanna stand up here and smear and bring other residents down and say, smear our name and our character without discussing things with us. Well, you know what? What goes around comes around, and at this particular point, God has shown that you cannot go around and talk about people and try to take other people's word, and yet at the same time, you yourself gonna stand there like you're perfectly innocent. You are not, and we want our 300 houses to stop the gentrification in Pointe Breeze.
Thank you for your testimony.
Carl Hill commenting on 160420.
Good afternoon. My name is Carl Hill, a longtime resident of the South Philadelphia community. I'm here today, you say land, and then you say bank. To me, that's money. We need these properties in our community to be given back to the people. I was a longtime resident of South Philadelphia, and I received one of the properties that I did sweat equity within myself, and I bought that property up, and now I'm paying taxes on that property. I asked that City Council in the community come to receive, well, I asked that City Council give forth these land banks back to the community so we could take these properties and bring them up and pay taxes on the property and not just give them to the developers so they can come in and gentify our community and put us out. We wanna have the land that our, our people give to us, our grandmothers and our grandfathers that, that inheritance that gave to us. I wish to give my property to my children, not just so that developers can come up into our community, take us out, raise our taxes. You talk about a 20-year tax abatement for the developers to pay not one dime where our community has to pay and hold them up and pay the taxes. I don't think it's right. And I also want to address the radio listener right now to come forth and try to like, come out to some of these meetings, come to your community, and give forth an effort to stop this. This is not right. You talk about land, and you talk about banks. It does not sound right. Please help us. South Philly, please come out. Please come out, South Philly. Stop the gentrification of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We now consider the bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar, and Mr. Decker, if you could read the title of 160256.
A resolution calling on the Sheriff's Department and Mortgage Foreclosure Divergence Court to impose a moratorium on all residential mortgage foreclosure sales and related ejectment actions resulting from residential mortgage foreclosure in Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. 160256 has been in the works for a long time. It was my intention to try to bring parties together, to try to work two tracks, individual cases, of which I'm aware of 13, 13, and then look at systemic problems within the system. My good colleague, Councilwoman Bass, has agreed to do an audit of the mortgage foreclosure systems, the Sheriff's Department, as well as other ancillary departments that come involved with that to see if not to, and there's a quote that goes with this, "We don't want the imperfect to be the enemy of the good." Where there are good things going on, where we save thousands of homes, let that process continue. But if there is one hitch in the system, if there is something that we can tweak to make it better, to safeguard these people, we intend to look for it, find it, and correct it. Second part of this is that we found at least seven different key areas where, you know, where there's smoke there, there just might be fire. When you have a limited number of law firms that deliver the maximum number of writ services, and those same law firms are vested in the removal of individuals from homes and the increasing of wealth to their firm, sometimes every now and then, there can be a conflict of that instance. So, we're gonna look at those things as, and we hope that the courts and the sheriffs will slow down just a little bit to allow us to catch up to where we need to be, to correct things that should be corrected. Because for us sitting here, there is no home insecurity, none that I know of. For those sitting out there, every day they deal with that insecurity, is that knock at the door? Not even the sheriff, but some entity trying to take them out their number-one investment in life, their home. So, with that, I call for the passage of this resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in Prop. 2. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution 160256 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160412.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in Prop. 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. 160412 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160420.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in Prop. 2. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. 160420 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160421.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the southwest Schuylkill redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 5944 Greenway Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Again, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in Prop. 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. 160421 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160423.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in Prop. 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. 160423 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160430.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Auburn redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 2743 through 2745 Frankfurt Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman, well, is not here. Councilwoman Bass, can you make a motion on behalf of Councilwoman?
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in Prop. 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And resolution 16043 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160222A.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Green Street, 2nd Street, Spring Garden Street, and 3rd Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Greenly?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Taubinberger?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are 14, nays are 0. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160271A.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 31st Street, Master Street, 32nd Street, and Jefferson Street. Further, to approve the master plan for the Brewery Town Residential Mixed-Use District by adding the site bounded by 31st Street, Master Street, 32nd Street, and Jefferson Street to the Brewery Town Residential Mixed-Use District and approving various construction projects.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass? Councilwoman Blackwell? Councilman Dom? Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Greenly?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Jones? Councilman O'Neal? Councilman O? Councilwoman Parker? Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez? Councilman Squilla? Councilman Taubinberger? Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are 14, and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and congratulating ye olde Philadelphia Club of Philadelphia on the occasion of its 90th anniversary, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in Prop. 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to oppose legislation that would weaken existing protections against predatory lending and harm the citizens of the Commonwealth by legalizing high-cost, long-term payday loans, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption and wish to be recognized to make some comments.
Come on. You wanna comment?
Yes.
Comment it. Wait.
Thank you. Would you prefer that I do it now, Mr. President?
Yes.
Or, okay, thank you, Mr. President. Let me take this opportunity to thank Carrie from CLS U Plan, Captain Blessington from the Military Officers Association, John Dodds from PUP, Siya Muhammad from Clarify, Mark Harrell from Southwest CDC, Reverend Holston from Power, and Mike Rolls from Pen Purge. Mr. President, as I listened to their comments today and put this resolution in perspective, I was encouraged to take a stroll through an editorial that was written on June 28, 2012 in The Inquirer, and a blob that was written by Daniel Applesburg when we were dealing with this issue in the Pennsylvania General Assembly. And the first line reads, "Score one for the wolves in Harrisburg." That was the first line of the Inquirer editorial. And that was after we had waged a very intense battle to try to stop the legislation from moving in the Pennsylvania House. Unfortunately, when I was there, I thought that the NRA was the most powerful lobby in Pennsylvania. It wasn't until standing up to do battle with this industry that you realized that there were some very powerful and wealthy forces behind those actual companies attempting to legalize loan sharking in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and thus impacting communities, particularly those with high levels of poverty like the city of Philadelphia. What's challenging about how this is moving forward now, and I want to thank all of the members of Council for their support for this resolution, but what is interesting about this is that they are now attempting to, these predatory payday lenders who have a track record of intentionally targeting some of our most vulnerable community members, they are now attempting to promote this product and the legalization of payday lending by usurping our already strong laws in Pennsylvania under the guise of consumer protection via the Consumer Finance Protection Bureau out of Washington. So, I want to say this to you, Mr. President, and for the benefit of the listening audience, that when I called former Councilwoman Marion Tasko in 2012 when we were dealing with this issue to say, hey, we need City Council's help, and this council passed the resolution then, and when it moved over to the Senate, Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez introduced the resolution in this body during that time, and we didn't know, we didn't know that what President, former President George W. Bush made illegal from our active-duty servicemen and women, that there was actually an opportunity for it to potentially become law in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And so, we need to thank for the record, and I want to say this, that State Representative Jason Dawkins, Steve Kinsey, Tanyael Cook-Ardis, State Senator Art Hayward, and our Democratic Chair of the Appropriations Committee, Vincent Hughes, are waiting and preparing to do battle on this issue as it attempts to move through Harrisburg. But I don't want any of us to take for granted that the effort to prey on desperate borrowers, those who are in desperate need of access to capital via short-term loans, and, you know, that they hope that they will be able to pay back on payday, but they end up paying such high interest and fees that they have less money to pay for their bills, so they end up taking out another loan, and that leads them into this vicious death spiral. I dare say that I will hope the residents of the city of Philadelphia would call on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to stand firm against this effort. All of the advocates that have gathered together that they will continue to stay united in working against this product as it moves forward. We, members of this council, have unitedly gathered and decided to send a letter to the CFPB urging them to issue a strong federal payday lending rule that puts an end to payday loan debt trap nationwide, and we are asking that the Bureau's final rule builds on rather than undermine the strong state protections like those in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that they enhance our ability to enforce them. Finally, Mr. President, I want to say that, you know, council's voice on this issue is not a, is not a new voice. Councilwoman Blackwell, you, Mr. President, along with Councilman O'Neal, and I can't remember if Councilman Greenly was a city member, when we first raised this issue, when I was not elected but a staffer and had the great honor of planning literally the first hearing on predatory lending in the city of Philadelphia that started via New Century Homes by-- member, when we first raised this issue, when I was not elected but a staffer and had the great honor of planning literally the first hearing on predatory lending in the city of Philadelphia that started via New Century Homes by a guy named John Byrd, who was building in the 4th district along with the 9th council-matic district, and we organized those first hearings here. And what spiraled out as a result of that, that it wasn't just the subprime lending industry that was in essence gouging via high interest and fees and other practices, but that it was this payday loan industry. And so now, do they not just do the short-term borrowing via paychecks, but, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I had a flashback. Mr. President?
It's okay.
They, in essence, Mr. President, you have to see how many people have used their car titles, literally their car titles, as collateral. So I want to thank members of this council and obviously ask for everyone's support, and want to thank yourself, Councilwoman Blackwell, Keanu Sanchez, and Green for your leadership, and Councilman O'Neil for helping us to introduce this today, and we ask for everyone's support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If Donald Trump and Speaker Ryan don't get together today, there may be a vacancy in Washington for the Speaker's position. So, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker, for always making sure to keep housekeeping in place. Chair, I'd like to recognize Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
It shall be reflected in the vote. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do apologize too for having to step out earlier. I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions previously in the record.
Thank you, Councilman. The record shall reflect that.
And a resolution recognizing and thanking NBC10 for its production of Generation Addicted using excellent reporting and an online platform to educate the public about heroin and opioid addiction. Introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating the 2016 Philadelphia Independence Week celebration from June 4th to June 12th. Introduced by Councilman O.
Chair can recognize this Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. At this time, are any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have three items to talk about. The first has to do with the resolution that was passed by this body last year requesting and identifying the opportunity for a local hiring preference regarding train manufacturing, and we have a train manufacturer right here in Philadelphia. On January the 26th of this year, a letter was sent to SEPTA, particularly to the chairman, Pasquale Dion Senior, in which all members of council signed the letter requesting that SEPTA consider a local hiring preference. In return, we received a letter addressed to Darrell Clark, President of City Council, and copied to, I believe, all members of City Council. And it contains two important errors. And particularly on the second page of the letter, in paragraphs four and five, it states that SEPTA would not be able to consider the local hiring preference because it would unduly limit competition by including a mandatory local hiring preference, and it's RFP. And as was pointed out in our earlier budget hearing, that it's not a mandatory local hiring preference, it's a optional local hiring preference. And in the fifth paragraph, it says that the pilot program has expired, and that again is not correct. The pilot program has been extended and is currently extended. So, again, I would ask that SEPTA consider including a local hiring preference in its contracts. There are only 10 train manufacturers in the United States. Recently, $305 billion were appropriated for the next five years for the transportation infrastructure. And the Buy America Act, which applies to all the bidders on, all three bidders on this contract, are subject to the Buy America Act, which is being increased in its percentage from 60 to 65 to 70 percent in terms of what has to be bought, purchased, which is American-made products or services by any of these foreign train manufacturers. The only train manufacturer in this region is in Philadelphia. The others is in Massachusetts, and I'm sure where the other one is, but they're not anywhere near here. And so with that, I will again circulate a letter to my colleagues to respond to this letter and request a local hiring preference. Again, for the public's information, that's 350 good-paying jobs, benefits, 20 percent are estimated to be returning citizens, and it supports 5,000 other workers. On another note, I'd just alert the public that our seventh and final community meeting regarding the heroin and opioid crisis will be held this evening in South Philadelphia at Palumbo Recreation Center, 700 South 9th Street. We will wrap up the public hearings, and we'll have a city council hearing regarding how we can best address this issue on Friday, May 20, in a hearing chaired by Councilwoman Cindy Bass. And finally, on a much happier note, I'd just like to say that we're hosting a free event for girls. It is going to be held at Temple Student Pavilion, their athletic pavilion. Everyone in the city is invited, girls ages 10 to 17. It is empowerment through spirit. We'll have the 76ers dancers, cheerleaders from University of Pennsylvania, Drexel University, Temple, as well as Philadelphia University, and some great folks from our school district, and a demonstration by the cheerleaders from West Philadelphia High School, and some women who are very successful today, who are former cheerleaders. Once we're done the clinic and doing that portion, another portion of this event is about college and careers, vocations, and also about scholarships for those who are in cheerleading. For those who don't have any experience in cheerleading, there will be a beginner's section. And so, I'd like to say that also for anyone who's interested, if you're a former cheerleader and you can add something to this, it's a way for us to reach out to the girls in our communities, give them something to do, and I hope everybody will participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Two quick announcements, Mr. President. Tonight, in Roxborough, we're having a first night market of the season. It is an unprecedented move on Ridge Avenue. They're shutting down from Fountain Street to Roxborough Avenue, and thousands of individuals who normally come out on a spring night will be out there for 40 different food trucks lined up. If you are hungry, bring your appetite tonight. And it's going to be a wonderful affair. It's a family kind of event. We're anticipating something like 25,000 people. Second thing is, after you, or before you go there, you can join us, and we'd like to invite city council and staff members to a public special criminal justice-related event. It is at WHYY tonight at the studios at 5:00 PM to talk about criminal justice reform. The Return Project is a film that is going to be aired there. So if you want to do movie in a theater with me tonight, you start at the WHYY viewing, and then join me up in Roxborough to have a bite to eat. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do, on a somber note, want to remember that today is the for-one-year anniversary of the Amtrak accident down in the Harrogate section at the Frankfurt Junction, and I just want to let people know they did have something today at noon. But there is going to be the Philadelphia Fire Department Family Association in partnership with the Harrogate community and the city of Philadelphia hosting the Sunset Memorial Ceremony at 7:00 PM at Wee Chee Lane in Carl Street near the Amtrak derailment site. They will have a wreath hanging for each of the lives lost, and a formal moment of silence and a candlelight vigil to honor the lives lost, recognizing the survivors and acknowledge the heroic efforts of our first responders and the community support. So just think of them in your prayers tonight, and always for the tragic accident and the loss of the lives and the so many people that were injured during that derailment a year ago today, Amtrak number 188. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just quickly wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, sir. I'm saying thank you to you in reference to your memo dated May the 11th that was circulated to all members of council, bringing light to the issue of housing preservation in the city of Philadelphia. Mr. President, I just want to note that while the issue of Philadelphia's aging infrastructure and the need to invest in under-invested sacred locations and buildings and parks and recreation centers throughout the city of Philadelphia has been an issue of much discussion, I have not heard a lot of discussion about the issue of home preservation. And when, you know, as I sit here and I listen to lots of discussion about the need to create affordable housing, and we're talking about Philadelphia's growth, and we're talking about future development, I will dare say to you that there are residents across the city of Philadelphia who are watching, saying, what about preserving what we already have? Who's paying attention? I want to say to Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, who in essence via his resolution, talking about the basic systems, home repair, and sort of investigating the reasoning behind, you know, that over 5,000-person waiting list of Philadelphians who were in need of preservation assistance. And in many instances, I just want to note for the record, because someone just thinks, you know, sometimes if you just need a roof, or you need a heater, or, you know, you need to get the driveway repaved because you're falling, or you're getting sued, they think you have access to capital and a credit naturally to go to the market to just get a loan to do it. And unfortunately, that is not what the financial reality for all Philadelphians are in the city. So I want to tell you, I look forward to working with you in support of the issue of housing preservation and making sure that while we're talking about future and growth and development, we don't forget our aging infrastructure, and that if we don't have stability and preservations for the homes that our residents, our long-term residents already live in, we won't have people to go into those recreation centers and libraries. So I want to thank you for your leadership, and thank Councilman Jones for highlighting the need to fund the basic systems home repair. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for your continued input on this very critical issue. The chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Yesterday in the Daily News, there was an article about a gentleman by the name of Michael Anderson, who was a plaintiff along with a disability rights group, Vision for Equality, and they won a lawsuit against the Franklin Institute. For those of you who may have not read or the article in yesterday's Daily News, he has cerebral palsy. And so, in order for him to attend the Franklin Institute, he had a personal care assistant go with him. And so not only was he charged admission into the Franklin Institute, as well as his PCA or personal care assistant, they filed a lawsuit in federal court in front of Judge Gerald McHugh, and there was a decision in their favor. I'm circulating a letter to members of this body. Hopefully you will sign that letter that we're sending to the presidency of the Franklin Institute regarding this matter, finding very disturbing, not only as Chair of the Council Committee on Disabilities, just by being a Philadelphian in our city. So hopefully, our members will sign on to that letter.
Thank you.
On another note, last Sunday was Mother's Day. I hope all the mothers had a great day. I hope that all the ladies, in particular in this body, who are mothers, I hope they had a great day, and I hope they had a chance to enjoy, for first time in a long time, a pleasant and warm Sunday. But like many of the ladies of this body who started their career in education, my mother was a teacher. She taught at Roosevelt, Fitzsimmons, Grants, and spent 27 years at Island High School. Often, my sister and I would just be getting up for school and eating our breakfast, when our mother would get into her 1974 red Chevy Nova with her radio dial locked into WHAT, Mornings with Mary, on her way to Front and Duncan to teach at Island. After school, she would come home, make dinner, check our homework, call the parents of students that she taught that day, and grade papers early into the morning or late at night. The next morning, she would get up and do it all over again. Now, when I was in law school at Temple, I had a chance to teach part-time at Island High School, and I saw the impact that my mother and other teachers had on students every day. Since that time, I've had a chance to visit various schools throughout the city and seen firsthand the impact these teachers and other educational professionals make in our schools every day, and see the work, the hero work that they do on a daily basis, really trying to provide a great educational opportunity for our young people. It's time for a fair contract for the people that mold the minds of the most precious jewels in our city, our children. Through the resolution that I introduced today, I urge both sides to come back to the bargaining table and execute a fair contract. These are the people that work with, as I said earlier, the precious minds of the children in the city of Philadelphia. Let's get a fair contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez.
Thank you. I want to echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Parker, and thank you for your thoughtful initiative on affordable housing preservation. It is something that all of us believe in, and it is, I think, hugely important. In that spirit, I will remind folks that at 12, we hosted, and many of the staff was there, Rebuilding Together Philadelphia. Council President, you and I have strategically used the work and the volunteer work and the leveraged work of Rebuilding Together Philadelphia as we have done work in our districts to make sure that we're just not building new buildings next to existing folks, but that we're making sure that people feel that we're protecting them in what I like to call my, how do we keep people safe in their homes agenda. And so I ask the council folks who did not get an opportunity to participate, they're still in the caucus room, there's materials there, and encourage everyone, as we look at affordable housing, accessible housing, to look at rebuilding Philadelphia as a partner, not only for your CDCs, but for your private developers, in getting folks, you know, whether it's their roofs, windows, all the different little things, to ensure that a new development is about making a community whole and not just about new people coming in. So I encourage all of you to go to the caucus room after council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That concludes the speeches. On behalf of the majority and minority, and the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 19, 2016, at 10:00 AM.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Council stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.